All right, with that, we'll go ahead and call to order the Town Council meeting for Mount Airy, Maryland. It is April 6, 2020, at 7:30 in the evening. Order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I believe Councilman Purrier has a screen set up for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and All right, thank you. All right, just for all the viewers' knowledge, this meeting is being broadcast live on the town's Facebook page and on local Channel 23. Can also be viewed live at the www.carolmediacenter.org. And questions may be asked during the meeting by typing a comment via Facebook. And that is all as far as the way the meeting will run. A few opening comments before we dive into everything. These are extraordinary times. No one could have anticipated even a month ago so much chaos and turmoil would be cast upon this world. We went from the joy of Super Bowl parties and Mardi Gras celebrations to a financial collapse of our nation, social distancing, compulsive hand washing, and yes, Zoom meetings. In this time of chaos and our loss of control of so many things, it is important to know that some things are functioning with normalcy. While certainly the staff and your elected officials have been saturated and even bombarded with information and concerns, your town, our town, has continued with the daily tasks of keeping Mount Airy functioning. Your water still flows, your toilets still flush, your trash is being picked up, and your parks are being mowed. The police are patrolling, and if you dial 911, the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company and EMTs will overspend. So for all the chaos, many things are normal. This meeting is normal. Please take comfort in the fact that your small-town government is prevailing during all this adversity. I want to thank my fellow council members for all they have done in addition to their regular jobs. In particular, I'd like to thank Councilman Purrier for educating all of us in Zoom and for putting this meeting together along with the help of the town staff. So we greatly appreciate all of your knowledge and willingness to help us all, Jason, get through this time. As well, I'd like to thank Mayor Pat. During this pandemic, Pat was quick to react and utilize the staff to exercise the emergency operations plan and keep this town functioning. So good job to Pat and certainly the staff. And now, before we start the meeting fully, I'd like to take a moment, have a little bit of silence and reflection on the two tragedies that have occurred just this past week in Mount Airy. One being the assault of this virus on the Pleasant View Nursing Home just south of the town border, the second, the terrible double homicide in a nearby residence of Heather and Noah. And during this moment of silence, please remember the first responders who answered the calls and the doctors and nurses who are treating victims every day. So with that, we'll take a few moments to reflect on that. All right, let's get on with the town's business. All right, won't be any presentations tonight, opening speakers tonight. We're going to start with the approval of the council minutes. We have the open meeting minutes from March, and the closed minute meetings will be presented next month. We weren't able to get those completed. No problem, we'll take care of those next month. So minutes for March, would someone like to make a motion to approve? All right, Jason has made the motion. Second? All right, we got Pam on a second. Any questions? I'll mute myself and give you a chance. All right, we're answering this one. If, we'll go and do a roll call just for practice to get through all the rest of the motions. Okay, so Councilwoman Reed? Pretty sure she said aye. If you can hold up a pen or give us a thumbs up.
Sorry, I was muted.
That's fine. Councilmember Purrier?
Aye.
Councilmember Washabaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mund?
Are we talking, are we still talking about the minutes?
Yes, we are.
Okay, yes, are you all, yes, aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye as well. All right, so we made it through our first vote of the evening. This went really well. All right, next on the agenda is the Mount Airy Police Chief's Report. To keep Doug on this.
Good evening, everybody, for the chief's or for the monthly report for the police department. Start off with our trainings. We did have officers that completed A-Ride training that was Corporal Neprah and Officer Eberts. And A-Ride is Advanced Roadside Impairment Driving Enforcement Training. All department personnel have completed their arms qualifications for the year and also completed patrol rifle school. As far as community outreach, I want to ensure to public that the police department is currently providing 24/7 protection and 12-hour shifts to the town of Mount Airy. The lobby of the police station is currently closed. Civilian staff are currently teleworking. Reach us, the non-emergency phone number for the police is 410-386-2860. That call is the Emergency Communications Center for Carroll County, and if police services need it, they will dispatch us or take the information and relay it to us so we can give the public a call. Also, there is an option, if you call the regular station number, which is 301-701-375, that goes to telephone, telephone auto attendant, and if they press 1, it will go to the county as well. Significant incidents in Part 1 offenses, we had 10 Part 1 offenses this year over this month for the month of March. That is an increase from last March and from February. We had one arson and nine larceny thefts. Basically, that was a 25% increase in comparison to February to March, and then 11% increase from March of 2019. Part 2 offenses, we had 17 overall offenses. One item of significance was a CDS arrest at the Mount Airy Elementary School where we responded to a suspicious person's call. Officer Eberts and his K-9 partner, Fedor, responded to investigate. The investigation resulted in the arrest of an individual with possession of intent to distribute a controlled dangerous substance, which was suspected heroin. The investigation managed to seize three grams of suspected heroin, a assortment of CDS paraphernalia, and there was also $960 in U.S. currency seized, and the police department will be moving forward picture proceedings with that as well. As far as the monthly overdose summary, we did have one overdose this month because opioid-related, it was undetermined. However, EMS did use Narcan to revive the victim, and that was in the 1700 block of Tressel Street. As far as calls for service, the Mount Airy Police Department handled 1,000 calls for service, which was an increase over last March as well as last month. For traffic enforcement, we had 77 total traffic stops. We issued 59 citations, 62 warnings, seven equipment repair orders. We had three DUI arrests, and we had three other traffic arrests. As far as criminal enforcement, we made criminal apprehensions. Now that, we issued one criminal citation. There was 5-1 DUI arrests, five CDS arrests, and there was one criminal citation and one, one other arrest. And that will be the police report for the evening.
All right, if anyone has any questions, please hold up a pen. Okay, we got Mayor Pat, go ahead.
I don't have a pen, so we'll go with this. Chief, first of all, it's nice to see the K-9 is running his room and board. That was good news. Also, I think there may have been some misinformation about our 7-Eleven having an armed robbery where it was in fact a, what did you call it?
Yes, that was a distraction theft at town only. They did not manage to make away with anything. Distraction theft is where you have one party trying to distract the, the attendant or whoever's working in the store, and another party tries to commit the theft. That happened there, and then right after that, there was another incident that happened up in the Taylorsville area, which is being investigated by the state police.
Okay, but we did not have an armed robbery is what I'm trying to clarify.
No, it was not an armed robbery.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here tonight. Appreciate everything you're doing to get through this pandemic like the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you all, and all stay safe.
Thank you. You too.
Next is the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. Bruce Walls is here to give us a report.
Thank you. Can you all hear me fine? For the month of March, rescue calls, we had 86 in Carroll, 28 in Frederick, 5 in Howard, and 1 in Montgomery for a total of 120 calls. Fire calls, we had 23 in Carroll, 12 in Frederick, 6 in Howard, and 2 in Montgomery for a total of 43 calls, which resulted in 109 calls for service in Carroll, 40 in Frederick, 11 in Howard, 3 in Montgomery for 163 calls. Like to remind everybody that, as the council president said, the fire department is up, running, and responding to your calls. However, the firehouse is closed to the public. Only active responders are allowed in the station. So if you have any business where you need to visit the station, please call the station beforehand and make arrangements to meet with the members who can take care of your issue. If you want to bring anything to the firehouse, also, please call in advance so that they can make sure that it's an appropriate item and that it's an appropriate time to be receiving it, that, you know, they're not involved in decon operations or anything like that at that particular time. So we do ask you to do that. And also, we would encourage everyone to visit our website, www.mabfc.org. There is some information there about the virus. There's also information about our response to Pleasant View Nursing Home and how we address that and that our units have been deconned, and they are available to continue to respond. And all, at this point, all of our personnel are safe, so we hope we can continue that. And we'd also like to thank everyone for limiting their calls. Our call volume, especially EMS calls, is greatly falling off, which is good because it allows us to limit the need for protective equipment and things that we would have to done just responding on a regular call. So again, the fire department is functioning. Unfortunately, we can't have any of our fundraisers, which is a bit of a problem for us financially perhaps down the road, but at the present time, we're just moving forward. So again, we're here to serve.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions of Bruce?
One question here, Council. Hey, Bruce, I know the fire house, the fire department is technically closed, but can people still drive up for emergencies for like overdoses and if something else?
Yes, yes, we, we won't refuse them. It'd be better to respond to a location, but we just had a call the other day where someone was brought to the firehouse. So, but again, I caution people to do that because you never know if we're out on another call, whether, who's available because there aren't a lot of people, extra people around the station. So it's best to call 911 whenever possible.
All right, cool. Thank you, sir.
At that, I'll, if there are no further questions, I'm going to sign out of the meeting and wish you all luck. Stay safe.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for you all.
Appreciate you calling in. All right, next on the agenda is community concerns, citizen comments. We're not sure all this is going to work out tonight, but we are going to ask Gina Campanelli, our Director of Community Development. Gina, is there anything that's come in?
No, there are no questions currently, but we have 40 people watching.
Okay, all right. That's, that's probably a significant increase from a normal council meeting. All right, we're going to jump into ordinances and resolutions. We're starting with ordinance 2020-2. That's the proposed text amendment restaurant in the industrial zone, and we're rescheduling that public hearing that was supposed to be tonight. Are you guys okay with doing that at 7:00 PM prior to the May council meeting? Is that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I see a lot of head nods. I don't think that one requires a vote. We're just moving the public hearing. Okay, all right. Next is 2020-6. That's a budget amendment to, oh, and I'll make clarification on, on lots of these budget amendments that are about to come through. These are items that were budgeted for this fiscal year, but it's going to run over to the next fiscal year. And Charlene, I think she's on here, you want to unmute for a second, Charlene? And explain to us that what, what's going on with all these budget amendments? Go ahead, Charlene.
Okay, yes, basically, these projects did not move forward this current fiscal year. We are planning to put them in the budget next fiscal year, and the auditors thought it was a good idea because this is several million dollars, over $2 million worth of projects, that we remove it from the budget this year since we know we're not going to do these projects. And then that is better, that looks like we've planned better, you know. It's the first year I've done this, and, and every year I try to improve on our procedures, and this is just the next step in that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Charlene. And if you could hang out, there may be questions as we go through these. These are all for introduction, so they're not being voted on tonight, so we need an introduction, and we need a second for that introduction to move it to the next month. So we'll start with 2020-6, Budget Amendment to Remove 525,000 for Rails to Trails East of Main Street for Introduction. I'll introduce it. Do we have a second on that? Please unmute and say yes. I see Patty. Unmute for a second and give us audio?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm looking at it.
All right, thanks. Okay, ordinance 2020-7 is a budget amendment to remove 637,426 from Rails to Trails West of Main Street, and that's for introduction as well. I'll move to introduce. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, got Carl Mundur on the second on that one. Third one is a budget amendment to remove, I'm sorry, 2020-a budget amendment to remove 580,000 for Watkins Park, inclusive playground project. I'll let someone else introduce that?
I'll go ahead and introduce it.
All right, Councilwoman Reed is introduced. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Councilwoman Washabaugh is seconded. All right, 2020-9 ordinance, Budget Amendment to Remove 680,000 for Wendy Ridge Park Access. This is for introduction. Someone else, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, Councilmember Mundur is introduced. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Councilwoman Reed is seconded. All right, ordinance 2020-10, Budget Amendment to Remove 800,000 for Twin Ridge Stormwater Management Pond. That's for introduction. I'll introduce that one. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Washabaugh is seconded. All right, ordinance 2020-11, Budget Amendment to Remove 344,500 for the Elevated Water Storage Tank Number 2 Repainting Project. That's for introduction. Would someone else like to introduce?
I will introduce.
Oh, Councilmember Mundur introduces. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Councilwoman Reed is seconded. All right, next on the agenda, the H item is, is actually going to be eliminated because we're going for the option 2 right below that. And that brings us to I, which is ordinance 2020-12, and that is to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. That is for introduction. We also have to set a public hearing for that. But first, we need to introduce it. Would someone like to introduce that?
I'll introduce.
All right, Councilmember Mundur has introduced. Is there a second?
What are you introducing?
We're introducing the tax rate.
Okay, I think I have to propose it first.
Well, it's for introduction. Tom?
Okay, so I, I thought this was an ordinance put forward by the mayor, is, is it not? Or, or is it?
It is. The tax rate is, you put it forward to the council and they vote on it, but they're going to introduce it. So what I'll do is just let the community know that I'm recommending to the town council that we keep the tax rate the same. Now, in situations where you have an increase in property values, that can mean an increase in your taxes to us. We did have a slight increase in property values. By keeping the rate the same, we, we actually satisfy two things. One, we're probably going to see some shortfalls this year as a result of funding, as far as income tax will be reduced, our highway user funds will be reduced from the state, there'll be, and there'll be additional costs with this coronavirus. So the 37 extra thousand that will net by keeping the rate the same, I feel is appropriate. Additionally, if you continue to lower the rate, then you're going to have to, at some time, bring it back up when the property values go down. So it's just consistent. We've done this consistently, so I hope we keep the tax rate the same, and that's my recommendation.
Okay, thanks. So, so we're okay to introduce this month, Tom, and vote on it next month after a public hearing, correct? Okay, so did someone introduce that yet?
Yes, I'll still introduce it.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Mundur is introduced. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilwoman Reed is seconded, and I was thinking we would set that public hearing for 7:15 on May 6. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, so 7 o'clock will be the public hearing for the restaurants in industrial zone, and 7:15 will be the public hearing for the tax rates. Okay? All right, I see some head nods, so it's going good. All right, 2020-13 is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2021, and I'll let Pat speak to that.
Well, we had a lot of emails now. We are going, we're going to actually present that later, but I'll just give the community and the town council a little heads up. And our operating budget so far, and this is out without taking into account reductions we're going to see from the highway user funds because there's not as much gas tax going to the state as a result of this virus. We're going to lose entertainment taxes. They're going to lose personal property income tax, a percentage of which is 30-something percent of our budget. So we're going to see some shortfalls in those areas, but I feel pretty confident that our operating budget will have approximately $46,000 in surplus. That surplus will be used on our capital projects, and we have an anticipated draw of 2.5 million. Now, 2.5 million is, we always go higher on our anticipated draws, and that is higher than we've ever done in the past. But one, one of the things you need to consider, if you remove the 1.8 million from the stormwater management project, that would be a $700,000 draw, which is significantly less than what we've done in previous years. So we are looking very solid financially, and the detailed budget will be presented next month.
All right, thank you, Pat. So tonight, there won't be any action on that, but I expect that next month we'll be introducing the budget, and a vote will occur in June. That's, that's our anticipated schedule. Okay? Next on the agenda is ordinance 2020-14. That's, we're trying to get that passed as an emergency measure, which will require four council members to vote in favor of this ordinance, and that is to extend certain deadlines, and that's based on the fact that we weren't able to have public hearings and a planning commission meeting in the month of March. Tom, did, do you want to cover any of this, or?
Yeah, just the two deadlines that this seeks to extend are, number one, both Planning Commission and the Town Council Meeting, one after the other in March, and then tonight for the Town Council, we're to address resolutions on water allocation, number one. And number two, with respect to the Planning Commission, the MXD ordinance that it has before it, I think was due back maybe by this meeting. We're very close to that. And so these, this emergency ordinance seeks to extend those deadlines by 30 days.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tom. Would someone like to move this motion?
I'll introduce.
All right, Councilmember Purrier, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilwoman Washabaugh is seconded. Do we have any discussion on this, on this ordinance? All right, with, okay, go ahead, Carl. Oh, yeah, you're voting? I, you kind of froze up on this, Carl.
Well, I, I lost everybody. So did we vote, my, my vote is yes on it.
Okay, all right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. That ordinance passes with a unanimous vote. Okay? All right, next is ordinance 2020-15, the Emergency Budget Amendment to Add 30,000 to the General Fund for COVID-19. These are items that have come up because of this pandemic, items that we've had to foot the bill on or anticipate putting the bill on. And this, again, needs to pass with an emergency motion. So four, four out of five of us need to be agreeable to it. Would someone like to, to move that ordinance in?
Larry, I'll introduce.
Okay, Jason has introduced. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Mundur is seconded. Is there any discussion on that item? Okay, the only thing I'll discuss before we vote is that it comes with a list of items on it that are the expenses that either have occurred or, or will occur, and a lot of it has to do with supplies and overtime and payroll overtime, supplies, and then there's some other things that are on here as well as far as equipment goes.
Yeah, there's personal protective equipment, there's signage that we've, we've put out. Again, masks, hand sanitizers, that alone is around 10,000. There's a decontamination machine in there for approximately 6,000 for the chief. You heard the fire chief talk about, they have that service, we don't, but we will. So there's a lot of things, and if there's probably about 4,000 left over, that would be contingency. And just to give you a heads up, that's to get us through the month. If this continues, we may be...
All right, Pat froze up a little bit, but I, I think we heard just about everything he was going to say. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold the vote. All in favor? Okay, we'll go ahead and hold the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, okay, we got a unanimous decision on that one. I realize now that I was going to use the roll call, but it looks like this is working out. We got a audio and a thumbs up. So so that seems to be working okay. No unfinished business, so now we're down to new business. I think Barney's probably going to unmute for this, and we're going to start with the manhole rehabilitation recommendation from Barney Quinn. Barney, you're free to speak now, please.
Okay, starting my video here. Okay, manhole rehab project is part of our I and I work that we've been doing for the past at least ten years, trying to get control of our water going into our sanitary sewer system and not having to treat rainwater at our waste treatment plant. This year, we took a little more directive approach to try to get our numbers down. And this is the first project that will help us do that, I think. We will be trying to stop water from coming into the tops of manholes where they're leaking in. We verified exactly where those places are, and we could stop a significant amount of water. And so that's what this project is. The initial project is for about forty four thousand with a not to exceed of two hundred thousand. So if the first twenty manholes work well, then we continue ten manholes at a time and get as many of these done that we can. So we had bid this project out, and we received three three qualified bids, and the lowest being WF Delauter and Son. And we recommend awarding that project to them for a not to exceed of two hundred thousand dollars. And this this project would be contingent that the upcoming budget is approved. Because it would start July first.
All right, we're going to be voting on this. So I'll move that we accept the recommendation of Delauter and Son not to exceed the two hundred thousand dollar amount. It'll be a second, and then we can have some discussion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Purrier is seconded, and now we're open to discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Jason, my fault.
Okay, just real quick, are we starting in a particular area in the town? Can you give us some guidelines as to where this project will start and where we look to move throughout the town?
Sure, we have five specific areas where we're getting heavy I and I into the system. One of those is in the fields of Nottingham. There's about twenty five manholes that we're looking at working on there. That is the initial start. We have an area down by, not far from Conestoga, that has probably less than ten manholes to work on there. There are three other locations like that, and then there's a few that we like to add to this project where we can't even get in the manhole because they're sealed shut. You know, over time, the lid's sealed to the to the frames, and you just can't just can't get them off. So there could be I and I work in there. There could be, you know, things we just can't see it because we can't get inside of them. So that's essentially where it is. Some of those are on Park Avenue. Some of those are on Prospect Road and also over by Ridge Side Drive.
Thank you, Barney.
Sure.
Councilmember Munder, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Sorry about that, Jason. I didn't raise the pen earlier. I apologize for that. My question is, first off, I would like to say I kind of wish this would have went to Mount Mount Airy Company, but I can understand the costs associated with it, and the bids did not come in within our prescribed by local or use local contractor ordinance, first off. Second off, is there, since this contract does go up to two hundred thousand, and it appears to be an ongoing basis, is there a, what I want to call it, a relief valve for it? That if we're not happy with the selected contractors' work, we can tell them to say thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done, but we've decided to go another another route since it seems to be just ten first, and then if we need more, we'll continue on.
Yes, yeah. So so the initial amount would be twenty manholes or forty four thousand dollars. Every ten manholes that we decide to add to it would be another twenty two thousand. So they would add that way. If if for some reason we didn't like the work going on initially, then we could just cut off and and not spend the whole two hundred thousand.
Thanks, Barney.
All right, is there any other questions? All right, all in favor of accepting that bid for the manhole rehabilitations project, say aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. All right, next is a Twin Ridge Stormwater Management Pond recommendations. Barney?
Yeah, so we've been very fortunate with our stormwater mitigation to have Carroll County working with us to help us get through the designs, even do the bid process for us. For one of two storm ponds that we have to do this cycle is in Twin Ridge, and that pond we or the county had bid out the project, got six contractors. Hamilton Site Construction was the lowest of those contractors. They have been prequalified with the county, and so and they are a Mount Airy company. They're they're not in the town limits, but they're in the mounting address. So their their bid was eight hundred and two thousand six hundred ninety dollars. So town staff recommends that the council award this project in that amount to Hamilton Site Construction. And then it'll also go through Carroll County's. Once you award it, it goes through Carroll County. They they finalize that award, and then we we take over from there.
All right, I'll go ahead and move that we accept the the bid for Twin Ridge Stormwater Management Pond from Hamilton Site Construction. Is there a second on that?
Also good.
All right, councilmember Purrier, beat councilwoman Reed just slightly to the punch. Any discussion on that?
I do have a question. Barney, is that the pond that's right on Deer Hollow Road?
Yes, it's kind of between Deer Hollow and Meadow. Make sure I say it.
Meadow Green?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to know the location. Thank you.
All right, my question is, is it solely for that pond, or does it also include the new pond that they're talking about building behind the American Legion?
So with our stormwater mitigation on the Carroll County side, we had one pond on Ridge Avenue that that satisfied everything. On the Frederick County side, the Twin Ridge does not satisfy all of our requirements, so we will have a second pond. So that would be a completely separate bid, and that's in design right now.
Okay, all right. And this bid that we have now, is that totally funded by the town of Mount Airy? Or is that one that the county is going to help us out on?
This one is totally funded by Mount Airy. The next one, we know we have a fifty fifty percent match from the state.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It looks like it was unanimous, so we're good with that one. Next, we have the Public Works Public Works Agreement that is for the Twin Arch Business Park Lot eighteen. And Barney, they have your name on there. I don't know if John needs a chime in too, but whatever you got, Barney.
Okay, I don't know. Tom, do you want to take this or?
Sure, yeah. It's fairly stick. It is a very standard PWA for this particular lot. That's my understanding that the final plat is probably on its way to the county to be recorded. So basically, yeah, and effectively it is a very standard PWA.
Yeah, all right.
Just have. Do we need to move it, or can I ask a question now?
We can move it in and then go to questions. Does someone else want to move this in or? Okay, I'll move it in. Public Works Agreement for Lot eighteen, section four, Twin Arch Business Park. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Oh, sorry, Patty can say.
Councilwoman Washabaugh. Okay, go ahead with your question, Carl.
Okay, I have one. I have one question. Maybe John or Barney can ask me this. Just refresh my memory. What businesses supposed to go there? What's supposed to be built there, if we recall?
You need to unmute.
Hey, John, unmute.
Yeah, so that's the J and J Trash Company. They'll be taking over Lot eighteen and eighteen A, which is a portion of Doc Fool's property that allows for the storage of their vehicles that don't have any trash in them. So there's no trash allowed to be kept on that site overnight when they're not in operation.
All right, cool. Thank you. Just the lot numbers. I need to connect the lot numbers into projects.
Yeah, so it's eighteen and a portion of Doc Fool's, Lot fifteen, making it eighteen A.
All right, cool. Thank you, John.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of accepting the Public Works Agreement, Twin Arch Business Park Lot eighteen A, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, Charlene, if you can unmute, you're the next person on the agenda, and I believe you're trying to set up a schedule a budget workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
With the current situation, we may be doing it this way, do you think?
I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, if you're going to do it within the next two weeks, you're going to be doing it this way.
Right.
Possibly within the month of April.
Yes, we'd like to have it in April because May fourth is the next council meeting. And I guess we'll be introducing the budget May fourth and maybe adopting June first. So really, we have some time, so we just need to figure out a time that's good for everyone to have the workshop.
Good.
I would say give us another week or two. We're meeting, we're going to be meeting virtually with the departments to nail down the mayor's draft.
Good.
I know that you guys are always flexible towards me, and believe it or not, I have nothing on my calendar.
I was going to say the same.
Sports, nothing, so I am flexible to all of you now.
I was going to say, sorry, I was going to say the same same thing, Jason. I think most of our schedules are kind of open right now.
Why don't we go for somewhere in the week of the twentieth, between the twentieth and twenty fourth? We, I I may actually, let me check my flying schedule here.
While Larry's checking, I'll give you all a little update. We're going to change things around to make it a little easier this year. Instead of me mute with Charlene and shooting out ten questions to each staff member or department head, we're actually going to have a conference with each staff member that is in charge of that one particular division, be it parks, be it economic development. We also want to include the staff liaison and the chairperson. That way, everybody pretty much knows going into it what their area is. Additionally, I just want to remind everybody, while we tend to look at departments we're closest to, I try to look at the budget, and you will eventually for final approval. I have to look at it holistically with everything together, and one of the big things we need to look at for the next few years is huge expenses coming our way in the form of a police station, center street, flat iron building. So you may see some cuts that you don't necessarily agree with, but we really have to be as lean as we can with these other large expenses coming at us. So thank you.
Thank you. So twenty twenty one or twenty two are all open for me. How does that work for everyone else? If if I were to say twenty two, does that work for everyone?
It works for me.
Yeah.
So, so real quick, so technically, the twenty second would be the normal EDC meeting. And I'm hoping that EDC can actually still meet in, you know, a virtual meeting like this. So what time on the twenty second?
Well, we could go for the twenty first. What if I say the twenty first? How's that work for everyone?
That works for me.
I'm good.
Patty's good. She'll be back in town. I'm good. Pam?
Yeah, perfect.
And Carl?
Should be good, yeah. I think that might have been one, two, three. That might be beautification, but I haven't heard of any discussion on meeting with that just yet. But.
I I I agree. It probably is, but I suspect that, well, I don't, it's going to be up to the mayor as far as commission meetings go for the rest of April, so.
I think that, yeah.
So you're you're good, Mayor? Are you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll look at the twenty first. Is there a timeframe you prefer, Charlene?
No, whatever works best with everyone else is fine.
Anyone opposed to doing it earlier? Is everybody?
Define earlier, Pat. Excuse me, Mayor.
No.
No, so just what time? When you say earlier?
I was just throwing it out on the table. We're normally restricted because we're all commuting. I happen to be off working from home, and I don't know, Patty, I don't know if you're going in or who's got to go into the office.
No, I'm working from home as well.
Is, I mean.
Five, five P M. So we have some life in us left?
Five P M. would be fine with me.
I can do five.
And not a lot of the audience, if they care to watch, and they are working, five's a decent hour.
Okay, all right, looks like five P M. Charlene, we should ask you. Are you good with that? I'm seeing a head nod.
Yes, that's a good time.
She gets off at five, but it's better than starting this day.
You're going to have to sit at your table late that day.
Right, then you'll be doing it from home anyway.
Okay, all right, so we got that knocked out. Twenty first, five P M. will be our budget workshop, okay? And with that, we're down to our reports, and we'll start with Mayor Rockenberg and his report.
Hey, can you still see me on the camera?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, council president Hushour, Jason, council members, y'all did a fantastic job. This is really an historic occasion to have a Zoom meeting for a council meeting. It's worked well. And just thank you all for your leadership throughout this. I want to talk to our neighbors now and let everybody know we are experiencing a national emergency as we fight an unprecedented pan epidemic. People have heard that unprecedented word so many times. We've been stretched beyond anything we ever could imagine. Extreme measures have been instituted by our federal, state, and county authorities to overcome this crisis. I'm confident that by each of us doing our part and working hard to prevent the spread, we will overcome this. We will then work just as hard to return to a sense of normalcy as soon as safe to do so. For most of you staying at home and adhering to CDC guidelines, it's critical to win this battle we are facing. While this has disrupted our daily routines and seemingly the world as we know it, we are discovering small silver linings as we establish our new norm. Most of the clutter has been removed from our lives. Scientists can actually hear seismic activities much more clearly. Our commutes have disappeared. Our external duties have dissipated. We have all become closer to our families, and we've all had more family time. Just looking for seen seen silver linings here. Many have had time to cook. I'm personally going to put out a cookbook when this is over. We've shared a lot of family meals together that we may not have done before. We're reading more. We're meditating. We're pausing the take in nature. We're crossing the house chores off our list. In addition, we've seen town staff members of our emergency response team and elsewhere perform services that they've never performed before, and they did it like pros. I'm so proud of our staff, and I know the council shares that pride. We have a common I'm so proud of our staff, and I know the council shares that pride. Uh, we have a common enemy, COV ID nineteen, COVID nineteen, and we have come together as families and as 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 a community, just as we will need to continue to do so as the days turn into weeks and even months. Below are the steps you'll see in my mayor's report that we have taken to keep the town updated uh and uh aware of what's happening. We formed an emergency response team that has co- conference calls uh every other day to review all actions, progresses, and next steps. The team consists of myself, Council President Larry Hushour, Council Member Carl Munder, David Worthington, Town Administrator, Holly McClary, Head of HR, Chief Reed, our Chief Police, Gina Campanelli, Ashley Collier, Charlene Singleton, Melissa Thorne, Colleen Riley, Katie Moore, and Doug Alexander, who's a member of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. Uh, might have been easier to say who was not involved in the emergency response team. Uh, we also have a lot of consultants with specialized experience. Our own attorney, Tom McCarron, Bill Butts is doing a great job with Senior Outreach. Dr. Rita Misra has been our technical consultant. I try to run things by her before I post uh medically related or scientifically related. Uh, Jim Stargell has been our public space monitor. We'll talk about that on the call. We're monitoring uh the parks to see the activity for potential closure if we get too much. Uh, activity is picking up vehicle traffic, so folks, we're supposed to stay at home. If you can walk to the park, walk, but if you're out driving, you may be going other places, and that's not in concert with the governor's uh stay-at-home directive or executive order. Uh, David Pyatt is a biotech advisor. He's monitoring the health uh and data, and he's checking on some issues with the Pleasant View Nursing Home Force. And Bruce Curley, who spoke at the meeting a few months ago, he's the VP of Civil Defense as a volunteer. We're deploying extensive public outreach incentives in order to keep our residents and businesses informed of the changes. Uh, the resources are public, community assistance, food, mental health. These are all things that that the community needs to know about, and closures. We're utilizing everything but courier pigeons. Direct mailers, Gina, you're checking on that, right? They're about a week behind. Social media, websites, newspapers, yard signs. We even put the yard signs in Spanish for food resources. We're using our electronic messaging signs, local cable channels. Uh, the town entry signs are updated today. We're doing Zoom conferencing calls uh with all our restaurants, uh 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 public service videos for our chamber. Uh, uh, Council President Larry did a video uh telling people about what's happening, so we're really using new new technology. And we're trying to relay and assist many federal, state, and county assistance programs. Uh, uh, we're actually doing physical distribution of flyers in the seniors' uh area. Uh, that's really the best way to reach them. That's how they hand out their newsletter. And those are just some of the channels that that we're using. Town staff has been nothing less than magnificent as we pull together these volumes of information and broadcast in our public outreach program to keep you safe and informed on a local level. I'm almost done, folks. Town staff and emergency response members have dedicated delegated areas of dedicated responsibility to ensure a cohesive and comprehensive approach to responding to this crisis, recognizing that the financial impacts of this pandemic are far reaching. We have relaxed our signage standards for businesses to maximize per minute business operations. Deferred water bills for residents impacted by reduced incomes, suspended water cutoffs, and reached out to Comcast to increase their service. No uh promises there, we're trying. Uh, we intend daily conference uh calls with various senators, delegates, and county government partners. Uh, a senior outreach initiative has been launched by our civic groups where they're actually calling the seniors and checking on them. Additionally, we are working tirelessly to get the seniors all the resources and information that they need. For your safety and to promote the governor's executive orders, we have closed public buildings, playgrounds, playing courts, and the dog park. The parks remain open at this time, but only for exercise. We ask that you keep moving and keep the recommended distance and adhere to the ten-person order. Several measures were implemented to ensure the health and safety of our town employees, our administrative staff. We instituted telework, we forwarded phones. We extended a liberal sick leave policy, uh and also for childcare. Our field staff uh operations continued uninterrupted, but we are staggering shifts to make sure that two essential people such as in the wastewater treatment center are not there at the same time. Uh, we can't have them both get sick. Uh, the police department has some police uh patrols. We talked about the decant decontamination unit that we're purchasing. We continue to secure vital equipment for our central staff and first responders and assist the state effort. Uh, as you know, we amended the budget to account for these uh added expenses. I will let Councilman Purrier talk about some of our other essential services. And if you look at the mayor's report, you have any questions or concerns, please call Town Hall or go to the Ask Your Mayor tab. And also, I remind everybody to please refer to the new simplified town website dedicated to this virus, www dot ma dot C O V I D nineteen dot page. In closing, I'd like to leave you with the following quote. We are all part of a great team, Team Mount Airy. Now is the time for us to do our part for most of us that's social distancing or isolating or isolating. Our actions, our civility, our concern for others impact us all more than ever before. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, mayor. Uh, that was terrific. Uh, Councilmember Munder is our liaison to beautification and the Parks and Rec uh board. Uh, go ahead, Carl, please. Are you guys hearing, Carl? I'm not hearing.
No.
My fault. I was on mute. My fault.
Start over, man.
I'll start over. Sorry, I'm not not gonna take as long as Pat did, as as a mayor did, hopefully. My my reports are normally long, but any anyhow, due to the COVID nineteen, there were no um commission meetings for parks and rec- for wrecks and park or beautification. But I do have some nice words to say in- instead of my normal report. First, I want to take a moment to thank all the nurses, doctors, and first responders that risked being exposed to this virus as they go about their job to keep them safe and healthy. I would also like to thank the town staff for always doing an amazing behind-the-scenes job, but especially during these trying times. Our world, nation, state, and town have gone through a lot recently with the COVID nineteen virus. And we will overcome this as we always have to together. This is not a time to be fearful and afraid, but to rise up and do things as as a society we are not accustomed to. Like maintaining a safe distance between each other, limiting travel and staying at home. The citizens and businesses, businesses of Mount Airy have done these things and more to bring an end to this crisis sooner rather than later. For this, I thank you all. It is important to be strong during this time, but also do not forget to be kind. At this time of crisis, do not forget to be compassionate and kind to your neighbors. If you know someone that may need help, safely reach out to them and offer help. Be attaining basic supplies for them or just letting them know that someone is thinking of them. Only together as a s- town, state, nation, and a world will we overcome this. I want to leave you with a passage from a speech from Queen Elizabeth of England recently gave on these unprecedented times. We should take comfort that while we may have more still to endure, better days will return. We will be with our friends again, we will be with our families again, and we will meet again. That's it.
Very nice, Carl. Thank you. Uh, next is uh Councilwoman Reed, uh liaison to the Economic Development Commission as well as the Planning Commission. Uh, please go ahead, uh Councilwoman Reed.
Yeah, so there were no commission meetings in March, um but as stated earlier, I would like to see both commissions resume in April um through a Zoom conference call. Um, if at all possible, obviously, I have to talk to Mayor Pat, the chairpersons for each commission and town staff to see if we can coordinate it, but I think both commissions are very important, um and we need to keep moving forward. Um, so hopefully, um in April, both commissions will be back. Uh, some MAMSA updates. Hometown Chili Cookoff was in June, and the MAMSA Glow Run was in May. Both those events are canceled. We haven't really looked at too much past June yet, so we'll keep you posted on any further events that might be canceled. The, the Mount Airy Farmers Market is scheduled to start on June third. Um, farmers markets are considered essential to this, the food supply chain. MAMSA is working to create a plan for a safe and healthy environment, including controlled traffic, control, controlled sanitation, um, maybe some curbside pickup and potentially delivery. Um, EDC, Donna Marie and I, with the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce, as well as Mayor Pat, um, had the opportunity to film a public service video. Um, it was both fun and informational. Um, so thank you, Pat, for coordinating that. Um, I am working on a COVID nineteen business relief webinar. I actually attended it earlier today. Um, and it's focused on helping small business, small businesses navigate through, um, you know, the federal programs that are out there. Um, I'm just waiting for a couple of potential dates, and I think we'll have two classes on one day, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Um, I know different businesses are busy or at different times and can't always, you know, attend a ten AM or three PM. So I will keep everyone updated on that. Um, and of course, Year of the Woman, um, we are looking for extraordinary women in the community, so if you know anyone um that deserves a shout out, we are featuring everyone on Facebook. Um, so go to the town's website and put your information, and we will reach out to you um if we, i- if we post them and if we need a picture or further information. Um, and watching the Facebook feed, um, someone posted, and I thought it was great. Can y'all also thank retail workers, especially the ones who are working at grocery stores? So, thank you to everyone that is out there keeping our grocery stores open, um, so that we can feed our families and buy toilet paper and paper towels, because apparently those are very essential. Um, the quote I will leave you with is the ultimate resource in economic development is people. It is people, not capital or raw materials that develop an economy. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Pam. That was uh wonderful. Uh, Councilwoman Washabaugh is our liaison to the Streets and Roads Commission, Patty?
Yes, um, our last meeting was on Tuesday, March and we had it at Town Hall. It was lovely. Um, and we, we discussed many things, but one of the main things that we talked about is that we felt as a commission that our role should be more proactive than reactive. And a lot of times, we have new businesses coming into our community, but the Streets and Roads Commission doesn't really get into the picture until after everything's done. And there may have been issues that have hadn't been really looked at appropriately or as as clearly as they should have been, because we may look at it more from a different perspective than people in the planning commission or people on the town council or even the town engineer. So, we decided, and it was very uh welcomed by the mayor and by the town engineer, that during that process, the site planning um approval, that we become part of that process. And so we would be able to then be proactive about it, and then when the issues did come to us, we would have a better knowledge base in in which to um be able to solve the the issues that come before us. So I'm looking forward to being able to do that in the future. So that was great, and now we are fully functioning. Uh, Mary Beth Abramsky was our newest member, and not only did she attend her first meeting, but she also stepped up to the plate, and she's our secretary for the commission. So, right then and there, she popped open her laptop and started taking minutes. So, we love Mary Beth. Um, so uh with that, I would just like to say that our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May fourteenth. And I just got a message from the chairperson, and she's all for Lynn Colletti, that would be. And she's all for having a a Zoom meeting if we're not able to get back to Town Hall. So hopefully, we can get everybody else on board with that that's on the commission. Uh, so we're hoping to go forward. We're being optimistic that May fourteenth will happen. Uh, the last few words that I would like to say is that the last few weeks have been extremely hard for our community uh the the last week. And we've had many hardships experienced by our community. Our roads have been quiet as well as the businesses and our neighborhoods in general. It has uh, it has forced many of us to realize how many of those freedoms we took for granted and how much we are all looking forward to resuming our freedoms in the new near future. We may be on a tough road right now, but I can assure you that this town has amazing strength and resiliency, and that is unmatched. We have neighborhoods watching out for each other. We have, community is doing the best to support the many businesses in our town, and we are all we are all banding together to make sure that we come out of this a better community. We have teachers that are learning to teach and connect with their students on a whole new level. We have uh also, you know, um, excuse me. I'm reading this, and I'm trying to look at the camera, so y'all have to bear with me here. Um, but you you know, we have so many people that have really dug in deep to make sure that we all are in this together, and um for that, we are truly grateful. So I want to thank everybody uh for, for staying on this, this road. And I would like to thank all the people that are on the front lines battling this every day. Uh, you're making sure that when this is over, we're on a smoother road and we'll be on that road together without social distancing, and we're all looking forward to that. So, stay healthy, stay safe, and we're looking forward to seeing you all, all uh sooner than later, so.
Alright, thank you, uh Councilwoman Washabaugh, and we're all students of uh Councilman Purrier now in in terms of flirting Zoom. And uh, he's, he's next. I kinda skipped over him, but we're working our way back to you, Jason. Uh, sanitation and and recycling, as well as the Mount Airy Sustainable Commission Liaison, uh Councilman Purrier. Go ahead, Jason, please.
Thank you, Larry. Um, as my other fellow council members have already expressed, um, many of our uh meetings have been canceled due to this pandemic, and um we will shortly uh be in touch once again. Uh, I would like to echo my fellow council members in saying for the past month, this has been something that we have never experienced before. Please heed the warnings of the CDC and Governor Hogan. We all understand that these are unprecedented times that are challenging us, but we can overcome this and come out stronger than ever. Continue to support local businesses whenever possible. These are important structures in our community. They have supported local sports organizations in the past. It is our time to support them if you can. As the weather changes to spring, please continue to maintain safe distances between neighbors and friends. Together, we will overcome it. On Thursday, we would like to encourage everyone to participate in a candlelight and/or ribbon vigil honoring Noah and Heather. This marks one week since their passing. This was a horrible tragedy during an unprecedented time. They shall not be forgotten. As spring comes full bloom, many of us are outside mowing and gardening. Please refer to Ordinance twenty nineteen dash one, which references grass clippings on sidewalks and streets. Once you have completed your lawn mowing, please blow your grass clippings back into your lawn. Not only will this help keep a- aesthetic purposes of our streets looking good, but it helps keep our town sewer and water management system clean. Grass clippings are also extremely dangerous for motorcycles. Avoid the fine and clean up after yourself. Yard waste pickups have begun. Next yard waste is April eighteenth, and the one after that is May second. May ninth is Bulk Pickup Day. This will continue. All acceptable items may be referenced on our town website. Questions can be directed by calling Town Hall. Remember that there is a two uh limit item per household. I wish Mount Airy residents all the best. Continue to be safe and help out others whenever possible. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh Councilman Purrier. Uh, I'm next on the liaison to the Water and Sewer Um, I'm next on the liaison to the Water and Sewer uh Commission and the next meeting for that one is on May sixth at uh seven thirty P M. And we'll see if we end up doing that Zoom or if that ends up uh a meeting that we can actually have. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be nice? Um, don't flush those wipes. All those wipes out there that everybody's going through right now, including all cleaning supplies, stuff like that, do not put them in the toilet, okay? Only two things go down there. One's toilet paper and I'll let you figure out the other one, okay? So, uh, I kinda said what I wanted to say at the beginning of the meeting in terms of uh how COVID nineteen has affected the town and all I would add is that when we get through this, and we will get through this, uh, afterwards, hugs are gonna be a little more meaningful and handshakes will be delivered with a little more purpose. So, uh, so we'll get through it and, and we'll get to the other side of this and, and I think we'll be tighter as a community. I think we'll be tighter as families. So, uh, you know, there's, there's a silver lining out there. I know it sucks right now, but we're gonna get through this. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda would be the, I think we'll bypass the Town Administrator Report uh this month and go straight to the Town Attorney Report. Uh, Tom, have you been busy?
Little bit, uh, mainly over the last month, obviously, providing advice on the various aspects of the town's uh emergency response to the COVID nineteen crisis. Um, uh, so, uh, that, that's mainly taken up my time, but uh I've also obviously worked on Public Works Agreement for Lot eighteen A that was on the agenda tonight, uh, the emergency workbench to extend headlines as well and a little bit of this and that, but mainly on the, obviously, the COVID nineteen emergency response. That's my report.
All right, thank you so much. Every, everyone should have a copy of the uh Code Enforcement Report or that may get sent out uh following this meeting. And uh with that, uh, I see no other business on the agenda, so I will move that we adjourn the meeting. There's not gonna be a closed meeting tonight. Is there a second on adjourning the meeting and we'll do a roll call? Councilmember, uh, Councilman Purrier has seconded the motion and we'll start with uh Councilwoman Reed. Give us a thumbs up and an eye. Un, unmute for us.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Council, Councilwoman Washabaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Purrier?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Munder? Okay, couldn't hear him, but we got the thumbs up, so I think we're good.
Aye, sorry.
And I'm an eye as well, so that's unanimous. Uh, thank you so much for attending the meeting. Hopefully, next month, we'll be back in the council chambers. Thank you, Councilman Purrier. Thank you, Mount Airy. Signing off.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Stay safe.
Yes.